I now call the April 5th, 2016, regular council meeting of the Riverton City Council to order at 7:00 PM. Would Councilmember Larson please lead us in the pledge and after that I'll offer an invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our dear heavenly Father, we're grateful that we have an opportunity to meet and discuss the issues before us tonight and do the business of the city of Riverton. Pray for thy Spirit to guide and direct us that we'll be receptive to the information that we receive, that we might be able to make good decisions tonight that will benefit us all. We're thankful for the opportunity we have to serve and ask for thy guidance and direction in our deliberations this evening in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Would the city clerk please conduct the roll call?
Your Honor, Councilman Mike Bailey.
Here.
Councilman Martin Canaan.
Here.
Councilman Lee Martinez.
Here.
Councilman Kyle Larson.
Here.
Councilwoman Holly Gibbon.
Here.
Mayor John Lars Baker.
I am present and declare that we have a quorum. We need to approve the agenda for this evening's meeting and we neglected to include on the agenda Resolution Number 1337, which is associated with the change in airport landing fees. So I'd entertain a motion to include that resolution under item 15.
Your Honor, I make a motion, we include Resolution 1337.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Are there any other changes that we need to make to the agenda? All those in favor of the agenda?
I think you need a motion. I don't think we had a motion for that.
Oh, you're probably right. Okay, so I'd entertain a motion to accept the agenda as it's been amended.
Your Honor, I accept the, I make a motion, we accept the agenda as approved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye. Communications from the floor, citizens' comments, anyone in the audience wishing to address the council regarding an item that is already on the agenda will be given an opportunity to speak later on. I would ask those individuals who wish to address the council at this time to approach the podium and identify yourselves for the record.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. My name is Carol Anderson and I'd like to address you folks about snow removal. It's interesting how things happen. Did you know, Mr. Mayor, did you know Bill Urbikite?
Of course, yes.
Well, years ago, when he was working for the city and was in charge of the snow removal for the streets, I got the idea with, that it would be a good idea for the city to plow snow to the curbs. I hadn't given this any thought about how it would fit in with the rest of the code or what its effects would be, but I suggested it to Mr. Urbikite. And he responded immediately saying that he couldn't do it because it was against various sections of the code and that he would have all kinds of protests about it. "Protests?" I asked. Well, then he went into explaining the one big code about, the one big section of the code about extended parking on the streets. And we had a lovely conversation about it, very informative, and I never asked him about what the other sections of code would be that he would be violating. I never gave it another thought until it became an actual fact in Riverton that the city started plowing snow to the curb. And it took me a while to remember it and then not knowing just what the section was, I started going through the code and when I found two others that had bearing on it and then found the one about extended parking on the streets, I quit looking. Now, Mr. Urbikite didn't say which codes, which sections of the code he would be violating, but when I found these three that I thought had application to this, I quit looking. So there may very well be more. Snow for adults in the city is an obstacle and it doesn't matter whether you plow it to the center of the street or to the curb. It's, it remains, it's an obstacle course. And so the question then becomes, well, which one of these two is the most accommodating to everyday life for the citizens involved? After having experienced both of them, I can come down heartily on the side of plowing snow to the middle of the street. I find plowing snow to the curb highly dissatisfying for the following reasons. When we have a snow here in Riverton, when it finishes, whether it's mid-morning or afternoon or whatever, my husband goes out to clear the walks because while it's still fresh, it's still a bit fluffy and more easily removed. Well, the, since 2014, when the system has changed to plowing snow to the curb, he'll go out the next day and find that snow has been plowed on the sidewalk and he'll have to remove it again. Our sidewalk is immediately adjacent to the curb and when orders come down that the operator is supposed to plow snow to the curb, it's impossible not to plow snow on the sidewalk, which is in direct violation with Section 12.12040, depositing snow upon streets, which reads, "No person shall deposit snow in or upon any street, sidewalk, alley, or other public ground within the city that has been accumulated or collected as a result of removing the same from parking areas and driveways serving commercial enterprises." Section 12.12.060 of the code reads, "Deposit of water on streets and sidewalks." It reads, "No person shall cause a pool of water or any standing water to be in or upon any site, street, sidewalk, alley, or other public ground, or throw, or let flow, or deposit any water in or upon the same, so as to cause the same to be wet, muddy, slippery, or otherwise dangerous or obnoxious. Nor shall any person permit water to flow, run, or trickle from any premises, buildings, or grounds owned or occupied by him or her, so as to cause any sidewalk, alley, street, or other public ground, or any part thereof, to become wet, muddy, slippery, or otherwise inconvenient, dangerous, or obnoxious. This section shall not be construed to interfere with the proper extrongishment of fires or the use of water in any manner in any other cases of like necessity, nor with proper irrigation of tree lines in the city." When, now, when you consider that snow is water in solid form and that when it gets above freezing, it liquefies, the first thing it does is to form slush. And when a car drives through that slush and splatters slush on the sidewalk or anybody in, that has the misfortune of being in that proximity, that's obnoxious. And when that continues, when, when the water continues to liquefy, it puddles and forms pools of water. "No person shall cause a pool of water or any standing water to be in upon the street," it says here. And of course, it's going to get wet and when the freezing temperatures of the evening come, then we have ice and that's slippery, which is dangerous. All of these things that are decried in this section happen when you plow snow to the curb. And so I submit respectfully, Mr. Mayor, that plowing snow to the curb is in direct violation of this section of Code 12.12.060. I have a lengthy list of reasons that I'm dissatisfied with plowing snow to the curb, but I'll share only two of them with you. This last Wednesday, after the big snore that we had and it cleared up, I went out to clear, to run some errands, I parked my car facing the street about, oh, roughly 15 feet from the curb, back from the curb. And when I was clearing the windshield, I found a chunk of gray-black, hard-packed slush embedded in the snow that was on my windshield, about the size of a tennis ball. That's the first time I'd ever had that happen. I figured it happened when the snowplow came through. Many, 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 many times during the 40-plus years that we lived in Riverton and the snow was plowed to the center of the street, there were times when I couldn't make a left-hand turn out of my driveway because of the barricade of snow that went down through the middle of the street. But I could always make a right-hand turn and go about my business and get whatever I needed to accomplish done. Never was snowed in. Now, with the city plowing snow to the curb, which means they plow it right across my driveway, every storm that comes along, I wonder, is this the one that's going to barricade me in my house because I can't break through with my vehicle? That's not a very unpleasant thought to have about your city, Mr. Mayor, particularly when you know that in the past, when they plowed the, the snow to the middle of the street, I always had access. I never had to worry about that. Now, I have to ask, is there anybody in the congregation who's here to address this Okay, so I, I won't address this extended parking issue because it takes a, a minimum of two people not from the same family to do that. But I would request that the city consider returning to plowing street, plowing snow to the center of the street instead of to the curb, particularly since there are violations of the two sections of code involved. Now, I'd like to thank you and the members of the council and everybody else for your time and attention. The one thing I will say about this is that when I've had time to think these different sections through, I certainly grew in appreciation for the really good thinking that went into formulating these different sections of code and how many grievances that they foreclose, as well as unnecessary expenses for both the residents and the city. Now, I'd like to thank all of you for your time and attention.
Thank you. I have to report that Mr. Butterfield and I spent some time talking about this issue today. And so it's something that's on our minds and we're thinking about it and trying to figure out the best way to accomplish this. Thank you for your time. The next item on the agenda is, is the consent agenda. Would the city clerk please read the consent agenda items by title only?
Yes, Your Honor, approval of the minutes, March 15th, 2016, regular council meeting, approval of the minutes, March 16th, 2016, special council meeting, approval of the minutes, April 5th, 2016, finance committee meeting, approval of finance committee recommendations for April 5th, 2016, approval of discharge fines of deceased defendants for April 2016, open container permit application from Deanna Powell for June 25th, 2016, for a benefit volleyball tournament at Sunset Park from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, and approval of a county plat of desert subdivision, filing number one, petitioner's Louis Dickinson, DBA LADS Investments.
Are there any items that require further discussion?
Your Honor.
Go ahead.
Recommendations from the finance committee for claims to be paid in the amount of $211,308.84, checks written for payroll liability for 3/18 of 2016 in the amount of $441,216.61, for a total of $652,525.45.
Thank you. The chair would entertain a motion for the approval of the consent agenda.
Your Honor, I would recommend that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Seconded.
It moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Your Honor, I have one question regarding the open container permit application from Deanna Powell.
Go ahead.
And I noticed in the application, she said that everybody's bringing their own coolers. Were we given any kind of guarantee that somebody would watch, that no young, young people underage would be getting into containers?
Go ahead.
I'd be happy to answer that.
All right.
One of the criteria of the application, when the applicant signs the permit, is that the providing alcohol to underage persons is not permitted. So I would assume that they would check their own containers. Maybe we can't assume that unless the chief has anything he'd like to contribute.
Thank you.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye. Next item is retirement recognition for Robert Crippen and Walt Stickles. Mr. Butterfield.
Your Honor and Council, unfortunately, Mr. Walt Stickles was unable to attend this evening. He had a last-minute conflict that come, that came up, but I do appreciate the opportunity to, to thank him for his years of service. Walt Stickles was our assets division manager within the public works department and served the city of Riverton for 16 years. And it was a pleasure to, to work with him and we wish him the best as we, as he moves forward in, in his life. Our next gentleman that I, I'm happy to report is here and I'm, I'm happy to recognize is Mr. Robert Crippen. Why don't you come on up here, Robert? Robert has been with the city for 13 years. He is currently at the level of equipment operator two. He has served our city well in the sanitation and recycling programs and is someone who has a very high level of accountability and is an honorable human being. You know, forgive me if I get emotional, but it's, it's a sad thing to see him leave our department after his years of service, but we are grateful for the time he's spent with us and wish him the best moving forward. When Robert first met me, when I joined the city almost two years ago, he told me that he was planning on retiring soon and I said I wouldn't let him. I lost, apparently. I then said he could retire when I retire and again I lost that one as well. So I just want to thank you, Robert, and present you with a watch, showing your years of service and also thanking you for your time with the city of Riverton. Thank you very much.
You suppose we'll have Walt Stickles come at a different time or are you just going to slip him the watch?
Mr. Mayor, we will look into that.
Okay.
Depending on his schedule.
All right, good, thank you. The next item is a mayor's proclamation dealing with public service and in Wyoming in general and for the city of Riverton in particular. So let me read this resolution to you. And so it says, "Whereas service to others is a hallmark of the American character and central to how we meet our challenges, and whereas the nation's counties and cities are increasingly turning to national service and volunteerism as a cost-effective strategy to meet their needs, and whereas AmeriCorps and Senior Corps participants address the most pressing challenges facing our communities from educating students for the jobs of the 21st century, supporting veterans and military families, to providing health services and helping communities recover from natural disasters, to assisting senior citizens to remain living independently. Whereas national service expands economic opportunity by creating more sustainable, resilient communities and providing education, career skills, and leadership abilities for those who serve. Whereas the AmeriCorps and Senior Corps participants serve in more than 50,000 locations across the country bolstering the civic, neighborhood, and faith-based organizations that are so vital to our economic and social well-being, and whereas national service participants increase the impact of the organizations they serve, both through their direct service and by managing millions of additional volunteers, and whereas national service represents a unique public-private partnership that invests in community solutions and leverages non-federal resources to strengthen community impact and increase the return on taxpayer dollars. And whereas national service participants demonstrate commitment, dedication, and patriotism by making an intensive commitment to service, a commitment that remains with them in their future endeavors, and whereas the Corporation for National and Community Service shares priority with county officials and mayors nationwide to engage citizens, improve lives, and strengthen communities, and is joining with the National League of Cities, National Association of Counties, cities of service, and mayors and county officials across the country for Mayor and County Recognition Day for National Service on April 5th, which is today, 2016. Therefore be it resolved that I, Mayor, Lars Baker, of the city of Riverton, do hereby proclaim April 5th, 2016, as National Service Recognition Day and encourage residents to recognize the positive impact of national service in our city, to thank those who serve and find ways to give back to their communities." And, and I am happy to sign this today and, and recognize those who have, who have given of themselves to serve their community. And, and I am constantly amazed at the number of volunteers that we have in the city of Riverton who are willing to give of their time every day on boards and in various other ways to build and strengthen our community without seeking any personal remuneration for that time that they've, that they've given. I, I think it's just a remarkable thing and before I was on the city council and mayor, I had very little understanding of how many people were actually involved in that process. And now that I sit here, I see that every day and I, I want to thank the people who, who contribute to the city of Riverton to make it a great place to live. Thank you. The next item is city committee and board appointments. And so that, that worked out pretty good. Somebody was thinking about that, I think. And, and so here we have some boards that operate. We have the planning commission that reviews plats and, and, and deals with the building side of, of Riverton. And we have four members of that planning commission whose terms come to an end at this time and have all said that they would like to continue to serve in that regard. Debbie Blumenschein, Garth Yates, Dan Moline, and Kenneth Hanson. We have a board of appeals and we have members there, Eric Raymond, Bill Davis, and John Martin has applied to fill a new term, an expired term there. And we would thank those who have served and appoint those. And the tree board has two members that have agreed to re-up and that's Paul Moranci and Aaron Justice. So with council approval, we'd like to appoint these people to new terms on these commissions.
We need a motion.
We need a motion.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion. We approve all the board members for the planning commission, board of appeals, and the tree board.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. The next item on our agenda this evening is consideration of air service proposal for Denver Air Connections. Could we have the report from the public works director, please?
Thank you.
Or whoever's going to do it all. I guess we got...
Your Honor and counsel, thank you for your time. This council report and this proposition regarding air service is one that has been on the city's mind, on the airport task force mind, on the airport board's mind for many years, and I'm excited and enthusiastic that we're at a point where we can talk about a potential solution to the issues that we've been experiencing for a number of time. I would like to recognize members of our Fremont County Air Service Task Force in attendance. We also have members from our airport board in attendance, and also representative from the Wyoming Aeronautics Commission in attendance. We also have our FBO operator here and appreciate their attendance and support. As you've received in your council packet, there are many things to consider when we talk about an air service proposal. Instead of me running through each of these points of information, as a team with the FAST group, the Fremont Air Service Task Force, we would like to present this information through a PowerPoint slideshow. Of importance, I do want to highlight that air service for Riverton Regional is a valuable asset for our community. It's something that we've had for many years, it's something that we've invested in for many years. We have a great terminal, and I think we have a market here in Fremont County of people wanting to fly regionally and get connected to the national transportation network. In working through this proposal, we'd like to first talk about why air service regionally is important for Riverton, why it's something that we are considering at this time, and then working through our current situation, and then working through the proposal that you will be considering as a city council this evening. With that being said, I would like to preface that it is the recommendation of the Fremont County Air Service Task Force and city staff that the city council enter into agreement with Key Lime Air to provide a shared air service route with Sheridan to Denver International Airport. It is also recommended that by a separate motion, the city council approves to enter into an agreement with Forecast Inc. to provide market optimization services for this Key Lime contract. With that preamble, I'd like to turn the time over to Mr. Kevin Krasznik, who will work through our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. So as Kyle mentioned, air service, reliable air service is critical to our community. And most of you are probably aware of Tour Twenty-Three, so that was a statewide initiative by the Wyoming Business Alliance, and what they did is they went and interviewed key stakeholders in every county in the state, hence the name Tour Twenty-Three. And what came about was that transportation is a critical issue for our state, for our counties, and for our residents. Fremont County, Tour Twenty-Three, we had a group of roughly fifty citizens that got together, addressed the concerns in our county as well, and the top issue we came up with was reliable transportation in the county and specifically air service. Hence, part of the FAST team has been working on that at Missy's leadership. I'd like to take you through the economic development side. These slides here, you probably remember them from the ID Inc. presentation for economic development. The base there, obviously being the leadership and a supportive leadership for projects going forward is critical, which we feel we have here in Fremont County and in Riverton. The red blocks there, I'll get into a little more detail, but that's the building blocks. That's the basis of what infrastructure do you need, what workforce do you need, et cetera, to even start economic development. We have those, and then the blue blocks are where we spend most of our time, about ninety-five percent of our time in economic development is spent there. How do you help existing businesses? How do you help entrepreneurs? And then the top one, which gets the most publicity, but not as much effort there, is recruiting new businesses. So like I say, if you look in tier two, things that we have to have here as a community, you have to have shovel ready, you have to have facilities you can move businesses into. The other thing you have to have is transportation, highway system, rail access, and air transportation. Workforce is critical as well as quality of life. Today, we're talking about air force, so I'll skip through the rest of those. Tier three, talking about the existing businesses. There's an initiative that the Wyoming Business Council has started. It's been going on for about a year. It's called BRE, Business Retention and Expansion. How do we increase the economic development within our communities? So we started some interviews, and we've interviewed five, six companies locally, and we're continuing down that process. A hundred percent of those companies, when we interviewed them, said one of their barriers to growth is air service, reliable air service, whether it means customers coming in, their personnel going out, or even at the personal level, having family be able to come and access them in that wonderful Riverton, Wyoming. Entrepreneurial development is the same way. New business recruitment. I believe ninety-nine, I'll just say ninety-nine percent, because I'm not sure if everyone, but majority of the requests that we get for businesses looking to relocate within the state of Wyoming require reliable air service, access to air service. That's why it's so important for us from an economic development standpoint. So here's some folks that we talked to. So, matter of fact, when I was doing the BRE interviews, the president of Brunton came to me and said, I asked him, "Why don't you have sales, marketing, admin here in Riverton anymore?" And he looked at me and he said, "The main reason is because we didn't have reliable air service. I couldn't ensure that my sales and marketing group were going to get to the trade shows on time. I couldn't guarantee that I could get a customer in here." He said, "We moved down to Denver, to Boulder area, and they have access to DIA. They're keeping manufacturing here, which is a good thing because of the expertise of the personnel." The education side, we have Catholic College, the Job Corps, CWC, et cetera, a lot of students coming in and out. Director Gazner at the Job Corps had mentioned that if we have reliable air service, they would be able to put twenty people on those planes per week, thousand people per year, plus more at the holidays. Same thing probably with CWC and the Catholic College, as we start looking forward. The tribes, the casinos are having issues as well. They're having people, when they need to come in and see them, they have to fly into Casper. Same thing with some of their patrons, the people that are gambling there. They end up having to fly in to Casper if they're coming instead of into Riverton. Sheridan route would provide opportunities to pick up some other people in the state to fly here, save some Sheridan, to come to the casino. Healthcare, right now, we have physicians flying in on separate aircraft, private aircraft. They could potentially use this service as well. Rocky Mountain Oncology basically said that had we known it was so difficult to get into Riverton via air service, we wouldn't have built our facility here. And these are the stories that the team hears over and over, that it's very important for us, and I won't belabor you with the rest of those, but we have stories for each one of them if you'd like to hear. The other report that we distributed was the economic impact of the Riverton Airport, and I'd just like to draw your attention to the left column there. So basically, it's providing one hundred and fifty-four jobs locally in the Riverton, Fremont County area. Annual payroll, just shy of five million dollars. Total annual economic output or impact is sixteen point six million. Not to mention, we have additional annual local and state aviation tax revenue from the operation of that facility, seventeen million dollars coming into our community. On the previous slide, you saw some statistics on the number of employees, and you can drill through that. If you have any questions, I can answer those later, but it's a large impact to our community to have air service at Riverton Regional Airport. I'd like to turn it over to Chairman Missy White to discuss about the current situation.
So I want to start with a couple of other slides. This is something that we see frequently here. The idea is, well, if we don't have the Riverton Airport, go someplace else. A lot of times, we can't. Roads are closed, certainly I-80 can be closed anytime from November through April, and there's times beyond those brackets where that happens due to inclement weather. We certainly experienced that just a week ago. Or likewise, we have accidents and eighteen-wheelers tipped over, so the idea of, well, it's okay, well, we'll just go to other airports doesn't always work. It's a nice thought, but it's not just that we're a distance from those airports, it's that oftentimes, we literally cannot access the rest of the world from Fremont County. So I'd like to speak a little bit about what's going on currently for the Riverton Airport and what's happening specifically with Great Lakes. So, beginning in the summer of two thousand thirteen, these two federal laws went into place that have been, created significant impact for Great Lakes Airlines. One of them creates new minimum hours for pilots, fifteen hundred hours to be in the copilot seat. The other one, CRF one-seventeen, is about the mandatory crew rest hours. It's making it very difficult for them both to retain and to recruit pilots to be able to fulfill their flight requirements. As a result of that, they canceled service to close to thirty different communities and have been canceling scheduled flights even within the communities that they currently serve. And certainly, we saw that that started impacting the Riverton Airport as well. So in two thousand thirteen, as we got into later in that year, we started seeing cancellations happening more frequently, and by the end of that year, there was a fair amount of buzz among Fremont County residents that Great Lakes was stumbling in their ability to serve the air travel needs. And by two thousand fourteen, that certainly continued, and by two thousand fifteen, with very significant rates of cancellation, that not only infected the consumer confidence, but the literal numbers of people in planeament. So from two thousand twelve, we were in the fourteen thousand neighborhood of employments from Riverton, dropping to under that for two thousand thirteen. Two thousand fourteen, we ended up with seven thousand six hundred and eighty-two. Two thousand fifteen, we dropped even more to essentially half of that, three thousand six hundred and thirty-two employments. So part of that is not just the economic impact to the general community, but we should also remember that when the airport drops below ten thousand passenger employments, then the Riverton Airport loses the eight hundred and fifty thousand annually in the entitlement funds. That goes towards improvements at the airport. This slide's a little bit hard to see on the big screen there, but all of the red there are the precancellations stated by Great Lakes. One of the ways they're trying to compensate is to proactively cancel flights, and they share that with the airport manager and with Mr. Butterfield ahead of time. However, they also do still have more spontaneous cancellations, depending on if they have a limited pilot pool or their limited plane pools as well. And while they do their best to share that information with the passengers on those planes, it is certainly an inconvenience for those folks on them because options are limited. So in case the verbal numbers of the passenger employments don't work for you, if you're more of a visual person, here's the dramatic bar graph of passenger employments dropping at the Riverton Airport. It's been rather precipitous, and again, the blue line indicates that the critical ten thousand passenger employment there. It's important to note, though, that the number of people traveling from the Fremont County area has not changed. We continue to have a robust twenty-six thousand tickets originating from Fremont County residents in our catch basin area, predominantly Fremont County. This does not include all the folks who come from elsewhere originating and come and travel to Riverton. So it's a pretty impressive number that we have that. Folks have certainly, although they may have left using the services of the Riverton Airport, they are still flying, and I get stopped in the grocery store being asked, "When do I get to fly back out of Riverton? I'm tired of driving to Casper. I'm tired of driving to Salt Lake. I'm tired of dealing with weather. I'm tired of the windshield time." So we've done a number of things as, trying to figure that out, and initially, when we started, there was hope that we could work with one of the big names, one of the legacy carriers. However, they are not interested in serving a smaller market. They likewise have limited resources. The federal rules are still affecting them, though not as severely, and they likewise, they're trying to decide, why would we put two pilots on a fifty-seat plane to a smaller market instead of having two pilots on a hundred-seat plane in a bigger market? We've tried to reach out to existing regional carriers like SkyWest, who both functions as Delta Connections and United Express. They likewise have limited resources, and because largely they're under contractual obligation to the legacy carriers, they have limited ability to create new markets themselves, operating independently. We've looked at trying to share jets with other, both Wyoming entities and beyond Wyoming borders, and likewise, there's a limited interest in doing that for a number of reasons, including, the two noted here, is that there's a disproportionate amount of fuel used on the ascent to cruising altitude, which is one of the major costs of operating a plane, so it's not actually necessarily an easy cost share or cost-cutting process. The second part of that is every time a plane lands, lands on the landing gear, whether it's been up for ten minutes or ten hours, that is one mark towards the scheduled maintenance, and that is a fairly expensive process as well. So when folks ask, "Well, I understand what you're talking about and what Denver Air Connections can bring. It's not the perfect service I'm looking for. When are we going to get that?" The short answer to that is, that perfect service doesn't exist for us. We cannot, at current point in time, find a carrier who's willing to provide the perfect service. We're going to keep looking for it. We hope that someday we can get back to that level of service, but we do have a good option in place for reliable and consistent service, which is this question of, why are we pursuing an additional carrier? There is a number of reasons for that. One, as noted, the change of pilot, federal laws made it very challenging for Great Lakes to continue to provide the same robust service that they were in two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve. Another concern we have is that because Warland Airport has been told that they are almost assuredly not going to be renewed for their federal essential air service grant, which is, I believe, a two-million-ish grant towards Great Lakes, so that helps Great Lakes maintain the shared route between Riverton and Warland. They have that money coming in. It's unlikely that Great Lakes will be able to continue serving the Riverton Airport without that, the Warland essential air service funding. And as noted earlier, reliable air service has been and continues to be part of our critical infrastructure for economic development. We are one of the places in the state that's well primed for the tourism industry, and we see that extractive industries are having a hard time economically in the state. Tourism is our number-two industry, and fortunately for us, we have a more diversified economy, including the tourism industry, and this is an opportunity to make that more robust as well. It's noted before that the volume has stayed remarkably consistent over time. Approximately twenty-six thousand tickets are purchased annually. Currently, the two major airports that are used most commonly are both the Casper and the Denver airports, both in the low thirty percent for each of those, and then likewise, Salt Lake, Jackson, and Rock Spring airports are also used. Of course, what we don't know are the number of folks who say, "Ah, I'm not going to fly at all, I'm simply going to drive." We don't know, and there's no way to track that. So fortunately, what we do have as an option is Denver Air Connections, which is the scheduled charter service of Key Lime Air. They've been serving Grand Junction for a number of years now with great success. They started serving Sheridan as well in the fall, and they are actually the, interested in expanding their market share in Wyoming to include Riverton as well. So as Key Lime Air, primarily focusing as a cargo service, they do all the freight carrier within a two-hour radius of Denver. They've been flying this Grand Junction to Denver route for a number of years now with great success, and they also have been very busy, up until last night, flying all the NCAA basketball teams around for all of that. They also serve for four other NCAA teams, so they're the preferred charter service for those options. So they've been servicing Sheridan since mid-November with thirteen flights weekly. It is a jet service. It's quite nice. We had an opportunity to see the jet, one of the jets they use for that, which is great, and they've had an incredible track record. So since serving Sheridan beginning mid-November, ninety-eight point six percent on time. That is an incredible record in the industry. United doesn't hit that. Delta doesn't hit that, not even close to it. These folks have been on time or ahead of time on a significant number of their flights. Likewise, in the first ninety days of service, they flew two hundred and eleven of two hundred and thirteen flights, and the reason the two didn't go was because Denver was closed. So this is their track record through some of the hardest flying times of the year, ninety-eight point six percent on time, and someone can do the math real quick to tell me what two hundred and eleven of two hundred and thirteen is percentage-wise. So they are interested in providing service to Riverton and doing that with a shared service with Sheridan. service with Sheridan. So, they are certainly a highly reliable airline. We've been very impressed with what they've been able to provide in Sheridan. And the folks in Sheridan who've been using their service are likewise very impressed with it and are very happy to have them servicing the community. They are willing to make their service as easy to use and functional as can possibly be thought of, including, for instance, they offer what they call a corporate membership. So, for a fee, pay $1,000 for any 10 of your employees. Those employees are guaranteed a very reasonable walk-up rate, even if you're getting to the airport just before the plane closes. If there's a seat available on that plane, they will get you on there for a very reasonable cost. I believe what they're currently talking about is $189. If you tried to do that in Casper to try to get to Denver at the last minute, you'd be paying probably at a zero on that. So, it's quite a reasonable process there. So, for our business community that have a lot of frequent flyers, that's a wonderful option for them to be able to pursue. Likewise, they are willing to provide very reasonable cost, likewise comparable to the corporate membership rate. If someone sees a doctor and the doctor's recommendation is that they need to go see a specialist in the Denver area, they will provide very reasonable flight fare for that person as well as an accompanying adult, which is, while not by any means a majority of our air-traveling public, that's a wonderful service to be able to offer, to say, you know, they're on our side. They want to make this work. Likewise, they've been very engaged in customer support and in our conversations with building this. For instance, the Job Corps noted, "Gosh, we'd love to have our folks use the Riverton Airport instead of busing folks over to Casper, but we have these certain requirements being a government agency. We have to go through this particular setup." Two phone calls and three emails later, they've got that figured out with Denver Air Connections really quickly. They want to be working with us. They want to provide the customer service. They want to make things easy for us. And likewise, in our conversations and negotiations with them, they've been very receptive, very straightforward, and very timely in all of our conversations with them. We certainly appreciate all of that. What we're looking for is beginning a July 1 service date of this summer, so in slightly less than 90 days. And what we're talking about is a flight schedule of two outgoing flights, Monday through Saturday, and then one on Sunday. The morning banks, you can read the times there. And these are essentially picked based on looking at the track record of flyers from our flying area, using the, kind of within the Riverton catch basin area and the corresponding banks of flights out of the Denver Airport. So, they're timing this so that folks, the majority of travelers, will be able to arrive in time to catch the corresponding bank of flights out of Denver. So, again, this would be twice-a-day jet service, 30-seat jets going directly to Denver. We think it's a good option for the Riverton Airport to pursue. It's certainly not the perfect offer. As I mentioned, there are folks who want this, you know, the sun, moon, and stars. That option doesn't exist to it. But we do have the option for very reliable, very efficient, very responsive jet service returning to the Riverton Airport. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Weaver for a few discussion points.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So, I'm going to focus a lot in your discussion packet on the question and answers. So, a lot of people ask what a minimum revenue guarantee is. And this is something that gets confusing. In this day and age, a minimum revenue guarantee is absolute in trying to get an airline to come to your community. In times before, you would just hope that they would come because of the passengers you have. Now, you'd need to pay, not necessarily pay, but you have a revenue guarantee so that it takes the risk away from the airline that is trying to prove a market. And so, how it works is they take the difference in cost of how much it costs to operate it compared to how much revenue they expect to get from it, and then they come up with your minimum revenue guarantee. And so, you'll be hearing that number quite a bit, or MRG is what hell we'd be referring to it. But that's a minimum revenue guarantee. So, what is the MRG that we're associated for paying, and then what else will we have to pay for? So, the combined MRG is $3,976,966. That's the combined rate with Sheridan and Riverton, which means Riverton's portion is 50% of that at $1,988,483. It, just so you, what's that made up of, that 1.9? The 1.9 is made up of funds from both YDOT Aeronautics, which they're the main contributor of that. They're at $1,193,090 is what they're going to contribute to this air service. We also applied for a SCADSD grant, which is through the federal government. That's a small community air service. That's $481,810. And then the remaining $313,583 is our obligation as a community. And community in Fremont County means City of Riverton, City of Lander, and Fremont County. As you know, we've each committed $200,000. We've talked to the county commissioners, City of Lander and City of Riverton. So, we well exceed that. And so, we're hoping that that will be used as carryover for the next year when it comes around. That'll help us in the future and also to help with cash flowing this. Whoops, how'd he go back? So, what are the additional costs outside of the MRG? So, Denver Air Connections operates as a Part 380 license of the FAA, which is a charter air service. So, that's a little bit different than scheduled air service. The license is a little bit different. And one thing that they cannot do is sell tickets. So, that's going to be our obligation to do that, also with marketing. So, I'm going to talk about a few of those things. So, Sheridan currently uses a company called Forecast Inc., and they're hired to set the rates. Well, actually, I'm going to read exactly what they do. Sheridan currently contracts with Forecast Inc. to provide the service. Forecast is an independent consulting firm that manages airline ticket inventories, sets ticket prices, and monitors airline management strategies to maximize revenues and minimize the demand on the MRG account. So, that's a necessary, that we have to have as a part of this contract, is someone to regulate the rates, to look out 90 days, 21 days, to see what other markets are paying, and then they come up with a price point for Riverton. That comes at a monthly fee of $6,500. And so, that's going to be an added expense to the City of Riverton, City of Lander, City of Sheridan pays that. And Idea Inc. has graciously agreed to pay for the first four months of that service, so that'll get us through the end of July. And then the hopes are, is the monies that had been set aside by the three communities, including Riverton, that monies will be in the future to pay this Forecast Inc. contract along with MRG. Also, a responsibility regarding this is the marketing. Mick Pryor has done a lot of work for us on the FAST team in marketing. He's secured several grants. And as you told me today, it was the easiest money he was able to secure that he's ever done. And so, Wind River Visitors Council has committed $25,000, $20,000 from the Riverton TAD, $10,000 from the Lander TAD, and then we've got a grant from YDOT for $55,000. So, that gives us over $100,000. And that was recommended from Denver Air Connections that we have at least a budget of $100,000 for marketing purposes. Good majority of that will be spent in this first part up through July of trying to get people on the plane. The other thing it's going to cost us is, in order to attract an airline, you have to give some incentives to that particular airline. And we're waiving landing fees and rental fees up at the airport in the amount of $38,500 in that for the first two years. So, does Denver Air Connections have co-chair and interline baggage agreements? The short answer is no. We're hoping, as they grow their market, that those things will come along. But right now, and it's kind of complicated, but with baggage issues, before, when you're able to go up to Riverton, you could check your bag at Riverton. And if you ended up going to Chicago as your end result, you'd get your tickets all the way through to Denver. With this arrangement, that, it won't happen that way. You'll book a separate plane ticket from Riverton to Denver, and then you'll have to do a separate one from Denver to where you're going. And that's not all bad in a lot of ways because you're able to book up with some other low-cost airlines that will save you quite a bit of money. Also, just note up here that some of the airlines don't even have co-chairs or baggage claim. Southwest, one of the big ones, they don't make agreements with other airlines. They want you to stay with them. So, does Denver Air Connections have flights listed on third-party travel web portals? No, they don't. We're hoping that they're going to be able to develop some agreements with third-party as the business is proven. But they're fairly expensive to get on Expedia or even Kayak. It's about $50,000 a year just to have that service available. So, will TAGS route be unscreened? Will Riverton lose TSA services? So, it's kind of a two-part question. So, as long as we have Great Lakes Airlines in Riverton, we will have TSA. If they leave, then we won't have TSA. With the Sheridan TAG flight with Denver Air Connections, currently, they don't have TSA. And so, we can't have a mixture of people getting on a plane. And so, this service will not be serviced by TSA, which, when I went up to Sheridan for their open house, I was amazed of how happy people were because we were standing all out in the lobby, people were walking around, and all of a sudden, it came over the intercom, "We're now loading the plane." They all walked out of the door and got on the plane and flew off. You're not cramped into a certain area for a long period of time. You actually save some time on the front end because they tell you with TSA, you're supposed to be there two hours before, and now it's, you only need to be there an hour before. So, you save a little bit of time on the front end. And then when you fly down to Denver, there's a bus there to meet you right at the plane. They'll take your bags yourself and take you from concourse A, drive you all the way around to the front, and drop you off at the front gate. And you walk right in and get your tickets and go through TSA and get on your flight. So, it's a pretty good service. Sheridan actually really loves that. When we started our negotiations with them, I think they thought that we were going to push the TSA issue because initially, it was an issue for them. When they first started, they wanted TSA to come back, but they found that the customers have really enjoyed not having that as a hassle. So, how should the community respond to this type of air service? I think the reliability speaks for itself. That's what our goal was as a council. That goal has been on the council goals for three years in a row. We want reliable air service. And Denver Air Connections hits that at 98.6%. The ticket pricing is very competitive to the neighboring airports. To match the expenditure demand, which basically, so we've got a certain amount of money that we have to make in order to break even on this deal. And we've said, "We've got to hit $350 round-trip ticket to break even." And so, we priced that with other neighboring airports, and a lot of them are a lot higher than that. So, that number right there is fairly competitive. Sheridan has produced programs to entice passengers, as Missy stated before, with the corporate rate, the medical emergency rate, and the government rate. When we were working the Job Corps, they needed a completely non, or fully refundable ticket, meaning fully refundable, meaning if you didn't even miss, if you missed the flight completely, you would be able to get your money back. Usually, refundable means you got up to an hour before to cancel that, then you get your money back. But in this case, so they made the modifications of that and are able to make that happen for the Job Corps. We really need the residents, businesses, and governments committed to using the service. So, although we have commitments from the City of Lander, Riverton, and the county for making up the difference with the money, businesses and other entities can say, "When we fly, we fly out of Riverton." That will be their revenue guarantee contribution to us because if we can fill the plane and average 350, we're not going to pay anything for this. And, you know, how should the community respond? Really, we've got one shot at this, and it's now. If we don't take it now, I don't, we won't have another opportunity. Great Lakes, in most cases, will be gone in September, and then we won't have any passenger air service, and no one will look at us. So, it's important that we look at that right now. I will turn it over to Mr. Butterfield.
Your Honor and Counsel, thank you for your time this evening. We also are appreciative of the public in attendance and the public that are watching at home. This is a lot of information to process, and it's because this is an important decision for the community. And we would rather err on educating you as a council, as a governing body, and also educating our public who are watching either remotely or here in person. And so, thank you as we've been working through this information. I wanted to just round out a little bit of the information that's already been communicated and clear up things that have already been provided in your council packet, the first of which is the budget impact onto this service. Mr. Weaver has done a great job explaining the situation that we're facing with a minimum revenue guarantee and then also the contract that we would need for revenue optimization services from Forecast Inc. Those numbers, as you can see, and have already been communicated, is $1.9 million for a year contract. That's July 1 through June of, that should be 17. I'm sorry, that is a typo. The next is the Forecast Inc. contract at $6,500 a month. We want to start that this month. And the reason being, we don't want to start selling our services and putting our tickets on the market the very day that services start. You find yourself very far behind the curve in doing that. And so, in working with Denver Air Connection and also learning from the path that Sheridan has blazed in their community, we learned that it's important to list these tickets at least three months in advance or as close to as possible. And we're right there, right now in April. So, this Forecast Inc. contract would start basically immediately should the council feel this is an appropriate route for the City of Riverton. At $6,500 a month from April 16 to June of 17, that's about approximately, I'll see, tell you directly, $97,500. Again, we have received a commitment. We are grateful for our community partners of Idea Inc. to cover the first four months of this service. That's going to help us get through this current budget season and get this service online and ready to go so that come July 1, when people want to fly, when they want to come to the Wind River area, when they want to travel with their families, they can do so out of Riverton. The total cost of that expenditure outlay, as you can see, is just over $2 million. How are we going to pay for it? That's the big question. It's already been communicated somewhat, but I want to make sure we outline it directly. The community funds, which, as a council, you helped to contribute to during the budget process last year, of $200,000, and our neighboring communities bring $600,000 for community contributions from our neighboring governments. The SCADSD grant, which has already been talked about, YDOT grant, which has already been talked about, and then also the Idea Inc. minimum of four months at $26,000. Therefore, our revenue outlay right now is at $2.3 million, meaning we have a bonus of a little over $200,000 to make this service happen. Why is that important? It's important because our commitment as a community is going to have to be a long-term one. Our market, unfortunately, has been declining, and it's something that has been communicated by Missy White. Over the last several years, we have seen a drop in half every year of our passenger planeaments. What does that tell us? We're losing our flying market. If we lose that flying market and it goes to zero, I fear we will no longer be a viable option, we will no longer be a sellable option to another air service provider. We cannot entice an air service provider here if they cannot see recent numbers that we want to fly out of Riverton. It's important for us to do what we can now to reverse the trend that's occurring in our community. So-- So, what is the ideal? The ideal is to get Denver Air Connection servicing us at the reliability rate that they have currently. We hope that that reliability will attract Fremont County flyers as it used to attract years ago. Prior to 2013, we averaged 13,000 employments over about 10 years. The market's there. Unfortunately, we've lost that market through leakage. If Great Lakes can continue to service us, we say great. I had an opportunity to speak with their CEO last night. They do not currently have any official plans regarding Riverton Airport, whether they are staying, whether they are going, but if we can keep them, I say great. They've been a community partner for us for a lot of years, and unfortunately, have not been able to respond to the pilot shortage issues that are affecting national air transportation companies, and then also the regulations, as have already been communicated. They've had a hard time responding to that. They've had a hard time keeping personnel. It's not a money issue, so to speak, it's a personnel issue. So, if we can keep them, I say great. Unfortunately, as it has already been outlined, the EAS contract, the subsidy to Warland Community Airport, is on the chopping block. How does that affect us? We are tied to Warland right now, and that $2.3 million that Warland receives and Great Lakes receives for flying to that market will potentially go away. And the questions we have to ask ourselves as a council, as a management group, is how viable will our route be without that $2.3 million subsidy, as we share it with Warland? I fear that Great Lakes, currently only able to operate a nine-passenger airplane because of the regulations they are facing, will not be able to generate enough revenue on their own to make money flying from Warland to Riverton to Denver. There's just unfortunately not enough, for lack of a better term, rear ends in the seats to make that profitable for them. We hope they stay, we hope that they can continue to service, but we are excited for an alternative solution, an alternative air service provider to work with them, and that is Denver Air Connection. We know that there are downsides to this service, but we also see it as a positive. We feel that it can be competitive from a pricing standpoint, and we feel that we can regain our confidence in the market through reliability. So, tonight, Council, you have a decision before you. Basically, as I mentioned at the start, approve a contract that has been negotiated in good faith with the FAST team and Denver Air Connection to provide this service. It is a one-year contract. We hope that this will be a long-term solution for our community. But again, keep in mind, it's a one-year contract. We have an opportunity a year from June to say, "This has been great. Our community has responded, we have flyers, we have rear ends in the seats, and this is making money." In fact, we're not even spending our minimum revenue guarantee. Or, we can say, "Well, shoot. Maybe we don't have the market that we thought here," and we'll have to address that in a year, and it will be an easy decision at that time. So, right now, the contract that's before you is to see if we can do something right now to preserve our flying market and reverse the trends that have been going on for two years, and respond to the goals that the council has set for the last several years. Again, as part of that, we need an action as well to approve a contract with Forecast, Inc. To do this service, we need to provide a revenue management service as well, and we feel that Forecast, Inc. is the best option for us at this time. Again, FAST and city staff have negotiated in good faith to produce a contract that is in the best interest of the city of Riverton. Where do we go from here? We have two contracts, I've just talked about them, but the process is not over. We need to have memorandas of understanding with Sheridan to say, "Yeah, this is a great idea, and they're going to work with us," which they have already committed to. But we also want to make sure that there is a mechanism in place to ensure that the management of these funds, the revenues that I just went through, are done in a very prudent and reliable and honorable way for public funds. The way we're going to do that is create an MOU with Fremont County, Lander, and the city of Riverton that has been drafted, has been drafted, excuse me, and sent over to our neighboring communities for review. Should the council provide a thumbs up on this opportunity, then we will bring that MOU to you at a later time to enter into an agreement to manage the revenues as we do this reconciliation on a weekly basis. What I mean by that is, as we evaluate the number of flyers we have on this route versus the cost to fly the route, and how much we would have to potentially pay or not pay from the minimum revenue guarantee fund, we will be doing that, and we manage that with contributions from our wonderful partners. The city of Riverton will be, it is proposed to be, excuse me, the primary fiscal agent for the revenue management team, and the county treasurer has kindly offered to be an alternative fiscal agent for those services as well. Council Mayor, we have taken a lot of your time, and we appreciate it. This is an important decision. I keep telling my staff, it's an exciting time in the city of Riverton. We have things that are going on that you don't really have happened in 15-year increments. We have air service, we have an opportunity to improve air service in our community. I'm excited about that, and I won't even mention the other things going on. Honor Farm sale, we've got a great reconstruction project coming up for our federal boulevard. It's an exciting time, things that don't happen every year, and we appreciate your consideration, we appreciate your time. And therefore, I leave my recommendation with you and would welcome any questions at this time. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Butterfield. Let's see, let's have a motion, and then we can open this up for discussion.
Your Honor, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the Denver Air Connection contract with Key Lime.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Now, is there any discussion? Mr. Bailey, then Mr. Canaan.
Okay. Your Honor, I have a question regarding the revenue guarantee and how, I guess, that math would work exactly. So, we have a $2 million revenue projection that they will need to operate the airline. So, I assume if we sold zero tickets and they made all those flights, it would cost us $2 million. So, how does that work? Let's assume we sell $1 million worth of tickets, and we have to pay them $1 million to cover the $2 million in expenses. I assume that's a proportional share with all of those entities involved, YDOT, you know, the federal government, county, city, whatever, so, to whoever that would be appropriate to answer that question.
Well, I can tell you what I understand, okay? The way this works is that Key Lime will bill us every week, and we will have to write them a check, and what that will amount to is, I think that plane comes in at about $132,000 a week, okay? Then they subtract all the tickets that were sold, and then we have to make up the difference on that, okay? Then, we bill the state and the federal grant and get reimbursement on those grants. So, there's a cash flow issue here that we have to be able to cover, but we've got $600,000 from the three communities that will provide us with the amount of money upfront to do the cash flow. Then the grants reimburse us. This is, I mean, basically, this is how we did the reconstruction at the airport. So, the city had to use cash reserves to finance the construction at the airport. They billed us at each stage of construction completion, and we had to pay that, and then we billed the federal government, and the federal government reimbursed us on the grant. So, it'd work the same way. And so, then whatever money we have left over at the end of the year, say we decided that we're done, we're not going to do it, we would simply split that up equally between the three contributors.
So, I guess where my question was going is, we're going to split with Sheridan, so we have 15 seats to sell, and they have 15 seats to sell.
Kind of.
More or less.
But if we sold 20 and they sold 10, the plane would be full.
Yeah, I understand.
Vice versa.
That raises a whole nother question about, do they still pay for their five, or their five they didn't sell? But my question is, what's sort of our break even? So, how many people do we have to have on that plane between the two of us to pay the cost of what it costs to do the flight?
Well, at $350 average ticket, and of course, that's, we've got a range on the ticket prices, so it's hard to say what the average ticket price really is, but if you divided it out, you'd have to have 30 seats filled at $350 round trip.
Okay, so, for us not to pay any to the revenue service guarantee, we've got to have every seat full at $350 round trip.
Right.
Every single flight.
Or fewer seats at more.
Right, but on this, the cost schedule I saw, the 350 was sort of the maximum. That was the walk-up last minute.
Correct, correct.
So, you're almost going to guarantee that you have less... So, we're making the assumption, we're going to pay some money.
We will, we will pay some money.
Okay.
Your Honor, what's the, are you finished?
Yes.
Mr. Canaan.
Go ahead. I was just wondering what the average cost is from Denver to Casper, Casper back to Denver, if somebody has that.
You mean for a plane ticket?
Yeah.
I pulled it up, Your Honor, while we were, and it was $800 to fly out of here on the 20th, out of Casper on the 20th for a one-day trip to Denver, $860.
Your Honor, I have some here, too.
Do you?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, 21 days out is $404, 14 days out is $508, 7 days is $770, 3 day out is $1,668.
So, very seldom, I still got the floor.
Go ahead.
So, very seldom, you're going to pick a walk-up and, at any other airline, and pay the minimum, the minimum, you're going to pay the maximum, the way that is scheduled.
Mr. Larson, my understanding is that nobody pays that, they drive instead.
Okay, well, the next thing is, is the question was, we have 30 seats to sell, but we're paying $6,500 to somebody to pay, to sell those tickets, correct? Now, is that same $6,500 being paid by Sheridan? So, there's $12,005, $13,000 being budgeted a month to sell tickets, and so, whomever buys those tickets, that money goes into Key Lime, and they don't bill the city of Riverton for seats that are sold. They just bill us for seats that weren't sold.
Correct.
Your Honor, may I just provide a quick point of clarification? I appreciate the FAST team for bringing this information. The $350 average tag price, we've been incorrectly mentioning that as a 30-seat requirement. That's actually at 15. When we calculated those numbers, we assumed we were cutting the plane in half because this is a shared route, and so at 15 seats, we should generate at that $350 round-trip price point, $2 million in sales. And so, I did want to just provide that quick clarification, that it's not the full 30 seats, but it would be the 15 if we cut the plane in half.
Mr. Canaan.
Well, you'll have to bear with me, because I guess I'm going to take up a little bit of your time here.
All right.
Because I do have a few things, and I personally don't have anything against having a commercial airline in Riverton's. My biggest problem with that is that, as was said, there's a, in the county, we've got 26,000 people wanting to fly. However, Riverton bears the burden of providing all that service. And I'll throw out a quick number, just this year alone, and my numbers are roughly correct here, working with Mr. Weaver in the past. Fremont County put in $90,000 into the airport. Riverton spent almost $700,000 on that airport. So, you kind of wonder, why doesn't the county want to take over the airport? Why would they? That's like me wanting you to buy a new car, but I'll use it whenever I want to. But some of the things that I'll put out here is that, and again, I'm not a one-point finger, but Mr. Weaver's comment about TSA, that you don't have to go through the hassle of going through TSA, okay, but let's be honest, you're going to take me down to Denver and drop me off, and rather going, going through a 30-person TSA on Riverton, you're going to go through a 100- or 1,000-person TSA waiting line down in Denver. So, you've got a trade-off there. The comment about the airport being big for tourism, Riverton just had one of its biggest years for tourism because of Yellowstone, but yet we had one of the smallest, if not the smallest, airport flyers. So, again, it's hard for me to equate that that airport does a lot for Riverton's tourism. Couple of questions I have is that, first of all, boardings in 2014, 2015, and in 2016 will be below 10,000, which means, if I'm not mistaken, they work on a two-year period, so in 2016, 17, and 18, we will not have that federal funding that we had before being over 10,000. What impact is that going to have on our airport? How much of Riverton is going to have to pick up on that?
Your Honor.
Mr. Butterfield.
I'd be happy to answer that if you'd like. Through the state of Wyoming and the Aeronautics Division, we have developed a long-term capital improvement plan for the airport, and that plan reaches 20 years into the future. So, how is this going to affect us right now, because we will lose our $1 million entitlements? How it's happening at this time, the state of Wyoming and the federal government has been very generous with the city of Riverton. It is providing us supplemental funds to complete the projects we have currently slated, which are, as you remember, our air rescue fire truck, and then modification to our air rescue fire building. Our percentage will not change, as it was forecasted during the budget season, and will be forecasted during the upcoming budget season for those improvements. Moving forward, in 2018, 2017, and '19, yes, we will have an impact, and we'll have to reprioritize that capital improvement list based on available funds. We will receive $150,000 in entitlement funds, even though we didn't meet that 10,000 employment threshold, we will just not receive the $1 million. So, we have already worked with YDOT Aeronautics to adjust our capital improvement plan, we've prioritized the most necessary, and then they've been generous to help us get through what has already been slated on our current budget cycle and the next budget cycle.
Thanks, Mr. Butterfield. Mr. Canaan, go ahead.
And one last one, of the funding for that 2.3 million, what if that goes away then next year? I mean, I hate to think that we're planning on this, you made the comment about a one-year thing, but let's be honest, it took Cody, if I'm not mistaken, when we were briefed a year ago, it took Cody three years to get away from their revenue guarantee, and Cody has a huge tourism flying in there year-round. So, I mean, I hate to think that we're only planning on this one year, and that we're magically going to be fixed in 12 months. So, of the funding right there, what goes away? And what's our plan to then, next year, bring it back up to our $2 million, you know, or refill whatever funds we used?
Mr. Butterfield.
Thank you, Mayor. We are hoping to use the excess monies. As I mentioned, as the current budget is, if we use all the funds available, we'll have a bonus of about $200,000. We hope to carry that over into the next fiscal year. Will that cover the $2 million? No, it will not. But we will be able to apply for another grant with the Wyoming Department of Transportation for the air service enhancement funds. We can apply for that, they will again fund at 60% level. We will probably need to request community support, similar to what we have requested for this year. The SCASD grant, which is a federal US DOT grant, will only be available this first year. And so, those funds of those that were mentioned will be the ones going away. So, ideally, we'd love for this route to be standalone after the first year, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Canaan. You are correct, this will probably be a several-year venture. It takes time for the market to regain, and it takes time for new routes to prove themselves, similar to what Cody and Gillette and some of the other airports have experienced. So, in the analogy of looking at this in the year mark from now, I think, should the plane have minimal ridership, the council decision will be very difficult once again. Should the ridership be very high, or relatively high, the decision to continue forward might be an easier one, because we will have a higher dividend of MRG funds carrying over. It would be over that $200,000 amount if we spend everything this year. So, in short, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Canaan, we would most likely need to request grants from the YDOT, excuse me, Wyoming Aeronautics Commission, and then and then also request support and assistance from our community partners.
Okay, I, again, I just, I hate to think that we're, we've only planned for one year, knowing, and I think we do know that it's not gonna be a one-year fix. You know, so again, that bothers me to think that even if that SCADZ grant, that's almost five-hundred thousand dollars, uh, once again, to go back out and, and think that the county and lander are gonna up their commitment from two-hundred thousand for another hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars over and above that to bring us back to the two-million-dollar, uh, guarantee that we need. Uh, that just bothers me that we, we haven't thought more than twelve months out. Uh, you know, that to me is like kicking the can down the road, that we're willing to spend two million dollars hoping that it works in the first year, and even if it does work, then we're scrambling to figure out how we, how we pay for it a, a year down the road. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I, I have.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes, for that one. Um, so, Mr. Weaver, you spoke about when you fly down there, they put you on a shuttle and take you around. So my question is, what about the return flight? Do you jump off the flight, go through TSA, and then you sit there and you have to? I, is there a plan in place that they're gonna have to get us from the terminal there back to there, or you just? I'm not sure what the deal is, 'cause if you're coming back from Minnesota, you know, and you hit Denver, do you have to get your bags, go outside the airport, and then catch a shuttle around to catch it? What's, what's the plan to get somebody flying back?
Mr. Weaver.
Your Honor, uh, so it really depends on if you have a bag. So if, if you're flying back from New York and you hit Denver and all you have is a brief, briefcase, you could just go right there to Denver Air Connections and get on. Now, if you have a bag, then you would have to go down to the baggage claim, get your bag, go up, and go start the process, like you just arrived there.
Back through TSA?
That's right, and.
Okay, okay.
Your Honor.
I have a question.
Mr. Martinez.
I have a question for you, Mr. Weaver. Would the people that were coming back, pick up their bags from the claim and go right to the airplane? Why would they have to go to TSA if, if Key Lime doesn't require it here? Why do we have to go through TSA down there to get back on Key Lime to come home?
Your Honor.
Mr. Weaver.
So, so they don't have any baggage, uh, agreements with other companies? And so if you came in on United, you would have to go get your bag in order to check it to go on with Denver Air Connections. They're not gonna transfer your bag from United and drive it over to Denver Air Connections and put it on the plane.
I understand that, but my question is, why does, we, why would I have to go through TSA after I picked up my bag? I could just walk out the door and get on Key Lime and come home.
Your Honor, because, uh, Denver Air Connections is housed in, in the airport, which is secured. So you, you, you're not walking in an area where it's unsecured. So you, you would have to walk through TSA to get secured, to get to Denver Air Connections, to get on the plane.
At, at the present time, the baggage carousel is outside of security. So if you had a checked bag coming in from a, a destination, you would have to go down to the baggage carousel, which is on the outside of security, pick that bag up, then go to your connecting desk, recheck the bag, pick up your boarding tickets, and then come back in through security. If you had a carry-on, if all you have is a carry-on, then you don't have to go out.
I, I, I understand that, it just doesn't make sense to me that we can't TSA out of here, but we have to TSA to get back home.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Peterson.
The, the next question I have is, with using that forecast to do our ticketing and stuff like that, is there gonna be some kind of a, a guarantee or a limit that as, as we get close to the end of our budget cycle and we haven't filled the seats, now all of a sudden is it gonna go from a three-hundred-dollar ticket that we were paying because we were filling seats? And now all of a sudden, it's a six-hundred-dollar round-trip because we're not making the money? I, I'm thinking as, if somebody's trying to fly, you know, if I'm used to paying three-hundred dollars, well, then all of a sudden, it's a slow time 'cause it's the middle of January, nobody wants to go fight the, you know, the snow getting to the airport or flying and nothing like that. But I have to, is now my ticket gonna be that thousand dollars that they're paying from other places? I, I mean, if, if, if there's no, if there's no guarantee we can do that, then I, I understand it, I'm just, that's one of the questions popped in my head, you know? If we're not making the money that we need to, to fulfill our MRG?
The, okay, uh, uh, let me answer that if I can, uh, because I've been able to talk with Nick Wangler from Forecast. And, and every change in the ticket price has to be cleared through the city of Riverton. Okay, so they, they don't have the ability to simply set those prices. Okay, so that does give us an opportunity for some oversight as those prices change, okay? Their goal is to try to make this a, a long-term project, a successful venture. They want, they want Denver Air Connections to be successful, and they want us to minimize what we're gonna spend on the minimum revenue guarantee, so that the money that we have will carry over next year and the year after that, without having to have huge supplemental funding from somebody, from, from the partners again. And so they're really gonna try to do this and maximize this, and that's why we're hiring these guys to do it, is because they watch these fairs every day, and they're gonna make sure that Riverton stays competitive.
Okay, thank you, Your Honor. That's all I have.
Mr. Bailey.
I, I guess, I'm sort of reiterating my first question, but I don't know if I got a straight answer. So in our scenario that we sell half of the seats available, i- is the, the three-hundred-and-thirteen-thousand dollars that the city of Riverton's gonna put, or the, the total between Riverton-Lander and Fremont County, that three-hundred-and-thirteen-thousand number, that's basically if we flew the plane with nobody on it at all, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so any dollar we generate more than that is gonna offset that number. So the three-hundred-and-thirteen-thousand is sort of the absolute worst-case scenario. So it's, even if we sell half the tickets, it's gonna be half that much, right?
The, the minimum revenue guarantee is based on a, on a, on a certain number, on a certain ridership. It's not zero, it's based on, it, it, on assumed ridership, and that's based on, on their experience going into Sheridan in November, December, and January.
Okay, s, so the question is, either what is that number, or is there a possible number that we have a zero? I mean, is there a possibility to have a zero out of hogget for us, meaning we've covered all the costs of the airline?
Yes, because this year we have four-hundred-and-eighty-one-thousand dollars in a federal grant. Okay, and so that will make up that difference. There's a, there's a possibility that we could spend none of the six-hundred-thousand dollars.
So if, if we fill the seats at the three-hundred and whatever dollars, we could spend zero dollars?
We could.
Okay. So we're somewhere in between there. So, so the chance of us spending the three-hundred thousand is fairly slim, I would say. I mean, we know we can put three thousand people in there, six wouldn't be a big jump. We've done thirteen in the past, so if we can do thirteen thousand, that's, I mean, we're not gonna spend anything.
That's right.
Right?
Right.
Well, okay.
Mr. Canaan.
One of your, you, you can't put thirteen thousand, though, because if you split it fifteen to fifteen, your maximum seats is a little over ten thousand.
If we, if we got to that point, if we got to that point, they would patch in a third flight.
They moved the golf ball.
Well, and, and we also, I guess, Your Honor, we can sell more than fifteen, 'cause if Sheridan doesn't sell them, we have the ability to sell.
That is correct, that is correct. The tickets are first come, first served.
So if Sheridan sells them all, then?
Mr., Mr. Tippett's.
Your Honor.
You bet, come right on, come, come right up.
Can I put that down? The high, high-tech stuff bothers me a little. Mr. Mayor and councilpeople, I come to you this evening as a voice from the past. Nothing has ever been easy for Riverton Regional Airport. I've lived in the community for over forty years. And while, uh, I look at the pictures on the wall over there, when we consider our current airport terminal building, it was not easy. I assure you, it was not easy. And three mayors had to provide leadership in order to have that nice facility there. And so my, my comment to you is, if you think air service is important to this community, I want to assure you that I did then, and I still do, then I want you to vote in the affirmative for this motion to start the contracts and the memorandums of understanding. Now, we all know, we've had reliability problems with air service the last few years. And the council, uh, gentlemen that are questioning the numbers, uh, it's very appropriate for them to do so. I have no argument with that whatsoever. But I just want you to know that we have to be a little bit visionary if we want this community to continue to be a progressive community. And I would submit to you that this has been the case for many years, and I hope that you'll rise to the occasion tonight and continue that progressive visionary attitude for the city of Riverton, Fremont County, Lander, and all those people on the reservation who I assure you will use that airport. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Tippett's. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak? Former mayor Warpinus.
Another voice from the past, uh, not quite as far back in the past, but, uh. This is an interesting discussion, um, when the, uh, Missy put the chart up on the, the, um, screen up there, and you could just see the decline. I remember those years, twenty, two thousand twelve and thirteen and fourteen, and it just kept going lower and lower and lower. And we put the FAST group together, and, um, they've just done an outstanding and remarkable job. I'm very impressed with the work you've done, Missy. So anyway, I would just like to speak as strongly as I can, uh, in support of, uh, getting this agreement signed with Key Lime. Um, we, we don't know what all of the answers are going to be down the future. Uh, we can, uh, try to second-guess and whatnot, but there's one thing that I can guarantee you from my four years' experience with the city, is that Mr. Weaver and Mr. Butterfield, uh, Kevin Kraschnik, I've gotten to know well, uh, Missy White, these are top people that are concerned about one thing, and that's the economic continuing growth of the city of Riverton. And their unanimous recommendation is that we move forward with this, and so I think you're, um, you, you need to trust these people that are working for us. And, uh, I just, uh, I, I have a son-in-law that lives in Lander, and he has a job, and he spends a lot of time flying. He's all over the United States. He doesn't fly out of Riverton at all. He goes either to Jackson or to Casper, not because he enjoys the drive, okay? Especially in the wintertime, but, um, you know, he'd, he'd fly out of Riverton in a heartbeat if we had reliable service. And so for goodness sakes, let's give us the opportunity to have reliable service for the city of Riverton. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor Warpinus. Mr. Peterson.
How many seats right now is Sheridan filling on an average flight? Do we have that number?
Well, the first three months was ten. But, but that's in the middle of the winter.
Middle of winter, okay.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. And, and somebody was in Denver a couple days ago, and they watched fourteen people get off the plane, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Nick?
Uh, that was me who watched, uh, I was on my way home. I flew home, uh, on one of the lucky flights of Den, of, uh, Great Lakes that, uh, left on time and arrived on time. But, um, yeah, just to give you an idea of what happened, I was there at, uh, they have a scheduled flight, and it's a little bit different from the schedule just because Sheridan, right now, operates on a slightly different schedule. I looked it up, they were s, scheduled to arrive at nine-twenty-five in the morning. They arrived at about nine-oh-five in the morning, the plane taxied in, very similar in a, a slot right next to where Great Lakes taxis. It's gate A sixty-four is their gate. Uh, fifteen people deplaned and got on that, uh, on a bus, uh, while the crew loaded all baggage onto, uh, onto a trailer right behind it. By nine, I would say nine-ten, they were rolling towards the main terminal, and by nine-fifteen, they were already at the main terminal, offloading folks and bags. Now, keep in mind, that was, they were scheduled to arrive at nine-twenty-five, and they already had folks at the gate at, you know, at their next point, ten minutes before that. And so, you know, I, I, I can't speak highly enough to, you know, I, I sincerely believe that Great Lakes is under-promising relative to what we're getting even now. I, I sincerely believe that they are, they are dedicated to, you know, making it reliable, and have put in enough checks and balances to ensure that even if, even if something does go wrong, they can still meet the reliability guarantee that they have, you know, that they've, I don't call it a guarantee, but the, the reli, they can demonstrate the reliability even with snafus.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. So on behalf of Wind River Job Corps Center, when you ask about numbers, uh, when we reach our full capacity, we will have three hundred students attending training here every day. On average, currently, as we are building up, we're at two-hundred-and-four students today. We're bringing in thirteen students a week and separating four. Forty percent of our students are from Wyoming. So when we get to our full capacity, we envision arriving nine students each week, separating nine, for a total of eleven potential passengers, based on our current statistics and figures. So by having this service here in our local community, we'll be able to provide greater service to our customers and to the community. And so we strongly encourage, and thank you for your consideration, to be able to provide this service to those young adults who will be in our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Your Honor.
Mr., Mr. Martinez.
Comments, I'd like to make one.
I, I see one more out here.
We, uh.
Go ahead.
We look at a lot of gloom and doom, and what ifs this happens, but let's look on the bright side. What if everything turns out great, and we have great airline service? So we gotta look at both sides, not just the gloom and doom. Thank you.
Okay.
My name's Bruce Camminga, I'm on the airport board, and just wanted to point something out to you guys, too. You know, when McDonald's moved to Federal Boulevard here, it increased Dairy Queen's business by thirty percent. And I think having an airline like this come in might just motivate Great Lakes to be more consistent, too. Because if we're overselling the airplane, and there's another airplane there to get on, the possibility is there that both, both companies can benefit from this, so.
Thank you, thank you.
George Piplicka. Um, our business obviously is in both, all the communities in Fremont County. We deal with basically every employer, or at least try to. We've seen a huge, the numbers to us are not surprising, to only see three thousand boardings. We don't have a single company that reliably uses our air service today, and that's all about trust. There's no trust. I, I have kids that work in. I, I have kids that work in other places that fly, tried flying out of Riverton, left sitting in Riverton for three, four days. The cost to lose that business is not worth an airplane ticket to buy for Riverton. Mr. Canaan's concerns about cost in one year? I think these guys have done a tremendous job of getting us into a one-year contract. I would hate to be signed to a three- or four-year cost obligation, not knowing if we can build the trust back. I believe we can, but I think we have to have a one-year contract, because if we only get three thousand boardings, we probably do have a million-five shortfall, and you may want out of this contract so fast you can run, you can't run fast enough out of this building, because we didn't get the trust. I believe Key Lime's the right company to give us the effort to make tourism, comment about tourism. I don't think the tourism comment is so much the tourism coming into Riverton, it's the tourism leaving Riverton. I take a family trip twice a year. I take twelve people. You think I can fly them out of Riverton? What am I gonna do, charter them on two flights? I drive to Casper, because I can't even fit them on the airline. I'm not buying two sets of airplane tickets. You'd be alarmed at how many families charge large groups, do group tours, and cannot book out of Riverton. We can't get it done here, because the seats aren't available. The Mike's concerns with the money and the, and understanding of fifteen seats, fifteen seats, I think we did a good job of explaining that. To my understanding, that fifteen seats, it's first butts in the seat win the battle. Is that gonna help Sheridan? Yeah. If we sell twenty seats, we're not necessarily getting a five-seat refund, correct? We're just helping the cost share of the three-point-eight million. But that means next year, we have more control. It means that we have less revenue guarantee. And when they sell twenty seats, we're gonna thank them first, because our seats are full. That's what a good co-op share agreement would be. We each split it and let the best advertisement done. The compliment these gentlemen and Mick Pryor, getting a hundred thousand dollars' worth advertising to promote that product is a tremendous opportunity. And having that cost shared through Riverton to market and manage it, control the seats, control the cost a little bit, we should be proud that we're Riverton and getting that option. I'm not worried that Lander, Martin brings up ninety thousand from the county. Hey, we got two hundred thousand from the county this year. Applaud those people. We're cost-sharing more money. I understand there's additional cost to the airport that's probably not discussed tonight, and labor and fees and things that the city has a burden with as well, but the city has a college and has Brunton and has other opportunities. Lander has the Knowles, never brought up tonight. Try to find an old student flying into Great Lakes. It's not happening, but they'll probably be back if you can book them where they know they can get that student in and out of this county. We deal with the hospital, employers, those situations. We're having to help them get those people to a job recruiting. How good is a job recruiting if I gotta go pick them up in Casper, ask them to work in Riverton? Probably rather work in Casper. Do you see the point? So, I applaud these guys and you, and I certainly would recommend from, from the real estate side of, of our county, that we need an airport, and we wanna be proud we have an airport. And if we have a two-million-dollar risk, best money you ever spent. And, and from what we've got, we've got a minimal risk. So, I hope you can see that future. There's some questions, but oh my goodness, when I listen to their presentation, this isn't a month of work. This must be years of work put into making that kind of proposal and making those arrangements. So, that's my input. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Dean Peranto, Mr. Mayor, council members. Appreciate you taking a minute to, to listen to me as well. George is, is right. This isn't something that's happened overnight. It's been a culmination of many years, the efforts of a lot of people, FAST, the city of Riverton. And I think it's important that we really fully appreciate the crossroads that we're at. We have the state of Wyoming offering to provide us financing. We have the federal government offering to provide us financing. We have various groups in Riverton, Fremont County, offering to provide financing. And if we don't avail ourselves of those opportunities, a year from now, we're gonna be kicking ourselves. I probably, more than most, turn and turmoil over the cost to the citizens of Riverton, because Riverton does bear a fairly significant burden of the cost. I don't think that that's as important in the scope of things as I sometimes think of it in my head, because we do have to be the leaders. We have the airport in our community. We have to show the other communities that it's important to us, and I think they'll come as well. There's been a tremendous amount of work, a lot of press, and I don't think we can kid ourselves, there's a tremendous amount of work to come before us. Look at the advertising hurdles that we have to overcome, trying to get people to fly out of Riverton again, when everything they've learned in the last two years has been, don't do it. I hate to knock too much on Great Lakes. I think they've been put into a position that is really a rock and, and a rock. There is no hard place for them. It's, it's kind of an industry standard now. Everybody's kind of in that, in that tough spot, but Great Lakes kind of made some mistakes along the way. I think they've tried to resurrect themselves in some ways. I don't think they fully can. There's no way we can reach our employment numbers, nine seats at a time, one, two, maybe three flights a day. There's no way. And when we talk about that million-dollar grant, I mean, that's important to the expansion of our airport. It's important to the maintenance of our airport. And really, the only way we can get to those numbers is to have another alternative. Yeah, this isn't necessarily the best alternative. It's not really that, that silver lining that we all hope and wish for, but it is what we have. It is far, far better than what we may find ourselves, or the position we may find ourselves in come to September, when we have nothing. So, taking this opportunity to take the chance, to avail ourselves of the opportunity of all the additional funding, I think is critical. You know, we, we have to look at our finances and how we're spending our constituents' money, but I think it's important, too, that we have that bigger picture as a community, and we provide the services to not just Riverton, but all of Fremont County. And really, it's not even just Fremont County. Thermopolis comes here to, to fly out of Riverton. Worland, even though they have their own airport, they find better reliability, or at least they used to, out of Riverton. So, it's more than just Riverton, Lander. It's Thermopolis, it's Dubois, it's Chashone. It's, it's, we have to be that community spirit, and we have to carry that forward. I appreciate it, and I hope you guys vote to affirm this resolution and this, this contract. It's, it's a tough place for me to be in, to, to say that, and, and try to get us to spend that money and move forward, but, you know, it's, it's with a hundred percent conviction that I think we need to do it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Bailey?
I, I guess, I think one of the numbers that we need to remember is that study that showed that it employs a hundred and fifty range people in our community. It brings sixteen million dollars in economic gain from the activities around the airport. So, I guess if you look at it in that frame of mind, the, the million dollars that Riverton's gonna spend is probably getting a pretty good deal for that money. And I think we do probably get our fair share of that in the county, because it is here. And, again, so, you know, I've really been torn, and I've bounced back and forth on both sides of this fence, and, you know, going into tough economic times, but I think we don't wanna shoot ourselves in the foot right before we get in the footrace either. So, you know, I think the airport, supporting the airport is a really good idea. I think we've gotta give this our, a good old try and make it work the best we can, and hopefully, in a year or two, it will be self-supporting, and they will see the advantage, and we can maybe expand this and, you know, get a flight to Salt Lake once a day, too, which would be awesome. And, and so, I mean, but we can't, we can only go forward from here, short of shutting down the airport and calling it good and telling those hundred and fifty people we don't want them to live here anymore and work here, and we don't want that economic boost to our economy, and I don't think anybody can say that that's what we want. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Canaan?
Can I ask one question? And what, what hundred and fifty-four people are directly tied to having a commercial airline?
Your Honor?
Mr. Butterfield?
Those numbers are referenced from a YDOT-sponsored study statewide. They looked at every commercial airport and did an economic impact study. Those employee numbers, those jobs, reference the actual jobs provided by the air service provider. They reference the jobs provided by the rental car agencies. They reference the jobs created for city employees. And they also do trickle-down analyses, for lack of a better term, for the jobs that they provide for the hotel industry and other industries within, within Riverton. When they multiply the economic impact, they, they consider the money that's generated from sales from having a commercial service airport, but they also consider the salaries that these employees make, and who then buy houses within our community, and who then buy their groceries within our community, and, again, using a term that might not completely correlate, it trickles down. And so, those numbers, from an economic standpoint, make assumptions, as all economists do, but they represent the jobs that are created. I hope I answered that question sufficiently, but they, they represent those jobs created, and then the money that is generated by those people holding those jobs, and also the money that's spent by people visiting. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you.
So, you don't have a hundred and fifty-four people in Riverton that are quote, "gonna be out of business" if there's no commercial airline up there, then? I, I mean, that was, I mean, I understand that was your concern, but...
Well, and, and I'm saying, I guess, if I can respond.
Mr. Larson?
A hundred and fifty-seven. The first time I heard it, it was, instead of fifteen million, it was thirty-five million. But no one will argue that Walmart was a great thing for Riverton. No one will argue now, yet there was arguments at the time, and Lander wanted to give them the land to build in Lander. But there was an argument that Walmart shouldn't come here, because they would put people out of business. The luckiest thing that ever happened to Riverton was Walmart. But nobody knew that at the time. Now, we're trying to sell part of the land down from Walmart to get more business in. Nobody has a clear future, that we know that without an airport, we know what the future won't be. I won't be driving to Casper. I'll be driving somewhere else. I don't wanna spend my two hours, four hours, driving somewhere else. Thank you, Your Honor.
Paul for the question? Okay. So, the motion that we have is to enter into an agreement with Denver Air Connections or Key Lime Air. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed?
No.
Mayor votes aye, and the motion passes. Okay. I need another motion, then. I need a motion to enter into an agreement with Forecast Inc. in order to manage the ticket sales route and inventory, seat inventory.
Your Honor, I make a motion to go into a contract with Forecast Inc. to do our ticketing and our forecast.
Okay.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on this? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Mayor votes aye, and the motion passes. I'm not sure that tickets will go on sale tomorrow. Okay.
I'm trying to vote right now.
But, but I'm thinking maybe, maybe it might take a day or two to get the website up and running to where it works, but those tickets will go on sale for ninety-nine dollars one way. Mick?
Mr. Mayor, if I, if I make, may make a commercial quip, those tickets will be available via the city website, flyriverton.com.
Flyriverton.com?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm sure it'll be up on the Denver Air Connection website as well. Okay? We have been here for two hours, and I would like to take a break. So, could we, could we take about a five-minute break?
Sure.
Let's, let's pick back up here. The next item on the agenda tonight is a public hearing and first reading of an ordinance sixteen dash zero-zero-one, purchase, use, or possession of tobacco by minors. We've got a report by the chief of police.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. So, as you recall, back on February the second, Prevention Management Organization came to the council to ask for some changes to the tobacco ordinance. What they specifically asked for, a couple of things. One was that the twenty-five dollar per violation fee be changed. They had recommended some higher fines, and also that we discuss making vaping devices unlawful for, for minors. Through that process, you might recall, we had a work session on this at the end of March, and the recommendation back to staff was to come forward with a, a proposal for ordinance language. And so, the, the proposed ordinance that you have really has three changes from the current language of the ordinance. One, the recommendation is that we just waive the fine completely and use the general penalty under the Riverton Municipal Code, which is a seven-hundred-fifty-dollar fine, zero to a seven-hundred-fifty-dollar fine, and allow the judge to use her discretion on what the appropriate fine per offense is. The second change would be that we make minor in possession of tobacco violations a mandatory court appearance, which means that that minor would have to bring an adult or gar, a parent or guardian with them to court to face the judge on, on that charge. And then the third change is the vaping devices, that we would basically make vaping the same as smoking, regardless of the substance being inhaled. We, we did go around and speak to the, the four main shops, or the four main stores that sell vaping devices. They already don't sell to minors, because they don't wanna get crosswise of the tobacco law. There are some substances, some oils, that you can purchase, that you can inhale through a vaping device, that don't include nicotine products, but our four main suppliers don't sell those. It's, it's physically very difficult for us to test those materials. There is no field test currently to test those. We literally would have to seize someone's vaping device, send it away to a lab, and, you know, eight, nine weeks later, get back some determination on what it was they were vaping. So, from a practical enforcement standpoint, simply making the inhaling of vapors illegal i- is our recommendation. So, that's the ordinances before you on the first reading tonight.
Thank you. The, with the city clerk, please read ordinance sixteen dash zero-zero-one by title only.
Yes, Your Honor. This is proposed ordinance number sixteen dash zero-zero-one on first reading, and ordinance amending Title IX, Public Peace, Morals, and Welfare, revising Chapter nine point one-six, offenses by or against minors. Section nine point one-six point zero-three-zero, purchase, use, or possession of tobacco by minors prohibited, of the Riverton Municipal Code, and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for an effective date.
The chair would entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion, we open the public hearing.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we open the public hearing. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye. I now declare that the public hearing is open. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statutes, with other applicable laws. I would ask those individuals wishing to address the council to approach the podium and identify yourselves for the record. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak?
Your Honor, seeing none, I'd like to make a motion, we close the public hearing.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, and the public hearing is closed. The chair would entertain a motion to adopt ordinance number sixteen dash zero-zero-one on first reading.
Your Honor, I make a motion that we adopt proposed ordinance zero, sixteen zero-zero-one on first reading.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Mayor votes aye. The next item, number fourteen, is Americans with Disabilities Act, ADA Ramp Consultant Selection. Public Works Directors Report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. The proposal and recommendation here is associated with the TAP Grant, Transportation Alternative Program Grant, that the city applied for and received for improvements...
Program, grant that the city applied for and received for improvements to ADA ramps, and then also flashing crosswalk signals. Throughout the design process for this project, we were hoping to do the majority of it in-house. In fact, staff went out and surveyed the ADA ramp locations, and Ms. Dawn Wilhelm began the design process. However, due to the high workload that Ms. Wilhelm's boss has put on her, it has been expedient that we look at providing, receiving consultant help on this project, particularly because federal monies are being awarded through this TAP project, and because there are federal monies involved, we have to go through a federal process with our project documents, which is very time-consuming, and we therefore think that we can accomplish some goals by reaching out and receiving a consultant service on this. With that background stated, staff advertised for statements of qualification from engineering firms per the city's consultant selection policy. As you remember, as part of this TAP grant, we had to adopt a consultant selection policy that complied with federal regulations. So pursuant to that newly adopted policy, we requested qualifications for a firm to design and oversee the bidding process of this project. The request for qualifications generated five responses from the following engineering firms: James Gores &amp; Associates, William H. Smith &amp; Associates, Sage Civil Engineering, Dow Incorporated, and Enberg Miller Engineers. A selection committee was appointed to review these submittals. This committee included two city staff members, one councilperson, one member from the force committee, and then also one member from the force technical committee. Review occurred over the previous week, and recommendations were due last Friday. Because of that, we did not have a recommendation in the council packet. Therefore, I have at this time the aggregate scoring of the proposals. For James Gores &amp; Associates, and this is out of five, 4.17. William H. Smith, 3.41. Sage Engineering, 3.88. Dow, 4.25. And Enberg Miller Engineers, 4.48. These proposals were weighed and considered with the following qualifications and ratings and rating scales. The qualifications of the proposal, successful experience and capabilities of the proposer, capability to meet the current schedule, familiarity with the city of Riverton and its projects, and then responsiveness to the actual proposal requirements. From that matrix that we have performed, and from the recommendation of the selection committee, staff recommends that Enberg Miller Engineers be awarded, and be selected for the consultant for this ADA ramp and crosswalk project. Pursuant to the consultant selection policy, this is strictly qualification-based selection. Therefore, we do not have prices associated with these selections at this time. The way the process works is we rate the firms upon their qualifications. Once the selection is made and approved by the city council, staff then opens the fee schedule of the recommended consultant. Should that fee schedule be appropriate, and we feel it's within our budget means, we will then continue forward. Should staff feel that the fee is too high, we then would come back to council, recommend that we approve the second consultant, and open their fee, and then move further down the line. So we have an opportunity to ensure that the fee proposal is appropriate to the work performed. Funds will be paid, the fees, excuse me, will be paid for out of the 1% fund, and again, staff recommends that city council approves the selection of Enberg Miller Engineers for this project. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair would entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I would recommend that we approve the recommendation of Enberg Miller Engineers to be the consultant for the ADA ramp TAP grant project.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, and the motion passes. The next item is the Airport Board Recommendation to Increase Landing Fees. Public Works Directors report?
Thank you, Your Honor, and this is in association with Resolution 1337 that you added to the agenda this evening. The staff report goes as follows. Pursuant to FAA grant assurances and even United States Code, the airport is given a mandate to try and be as self-sustaining as possible. And now, there is a qualifying statement, even in the United States Code, that we are self-sustaining as possible under the specific circumstances of the existing airport. With that being said, the city of Riverton accomplishes this mandate by charging fees for users of airport services. One of these fees is the landing fee, specifically the commercial landing fee. To date, the city of Riverton and Riverton Regional Airport has charged a landing fee, a commercial landing fee, of 35 cents per 1,000 pounds. In 2011, WIDOT Aeronautics published a rates and charges analysis of airports within the region, both in Wyoming and neighboring states. From that rates and charges analysis, the city of Riverton and its staff was able to compare how equitable and how competitive the rates are that we charge our users at the airport. From that fee structure, we found that in 2011, Riverton lagged behind commercial landing fees with its comparable airports within the state by nearly 50 cents per 1,000 pounds. We were undercharging comparative to other airports. As you see in the staff report, Casper-Natrona in 2011 charged 83 cents per 1,000 pounds. They are now at $1.01 per 1,000 pound. Cheyenne Regional was 82 cents per 1,000. Gillette was 85. Laramie, 84. Rock Springs, 85. And Yellowstone, 85. In light of the disparity between Riverton Regional and other like Wyoming Regional airports, the Airport Board considered the subject of increasing landing fees in both its February and March meetings. After consideration, the board unanimously approved a motion recommending the city council increase commercial landing fees to 85 cents per 1,000 pounds. This increase will affect Riverton Regional's current commercial air service providers and any future air service providers. Great Lakes Aviation is one of those, and they have been contacted about this increase and the recommendation of the Airport Board. This rate increase will be included in their current agreement that they have with the city of Riverton. Denver Air Connection has similarly been made aware of this increase to landing fees, and know that it will be coming before you this evening for approval. Based on the action of the Airport Board, staff recommends the city council approves Resolution Number 1337, supporting the adjustment of commercial landing fees at Riverton Regional Airport. Doing so will increase the airport's efforts to be as self-sustaining as possible under its specific circumstances. For a budget impact, obviously, increasing the fee will provide a higher percentage of revenue to the airport enterprise fund, and as was mentioned, this fee will be waived pursuant to the air carrier incentive program of the FAA for Denver Air Connection for its initial service years. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. The chair would entertain a motion for the approval of Resolution Number 1337.
Your Honor, I make a motion, we approve Resolution Number 1337.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I have one question, Your Honor.
Mr. Bailey?
Your Honor, Mr. Butterfield, you mentioned that Casper went to $1.01, and did any of the rest of these airports raise their rates between now, or since 2011?
Your Honor, I have not contacted other airports on this list. Should that be something the council would like, we can do that.
Thank you. We might be going cheap, huh?
Yeah.
Even still cheap. I guess the thought strikes me that we're giving this away, right? We're going to raise it, and then we're waiving it. Okay? And so, you know, it ought to be good for a match someplace. You know, this is something that the city's giving up. You know, we could charge $10 a 1,000 pounds, and, you know, have a really significant match. Okay. Got a motion? Any more discussion? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Nay. I mean, excuse me.
Can't vote twice, Kyle.
Only three more hours to go.
Okay, only three more hours to go. No, we got to get out of here. Okay, mayor votes aye, and the motion passes. Council committee reports, and council members roundtable. Anybody got anything they want to talk about? Okay. Mr. Weaver?
I do, Your Honor. Two things. So for our work session next week, we're going to be presenting the annual report, kind of the accomplishments of what happened in 2015, and then we're also going to be doing a pre-budget, just to talk with the council of things that you want to see in the budget as we start the budget process as staff. The other thing is, is the discussion about recycling, there's going to be two community recycling forums that have been organized. I'm on the stakeholders' task force. They're going to be holding one in Lander on Thursday, April 7th, at the Lander United Methodist Church, and then the one in Riverton will be Monday, April 18th, and they'll be here in City Hall, will be televising that. I just encourage residents to come, not necessarily to say it just needs to go away, or it needs to stay, but come with solutions. That's what we need to look at. I mean, the solid waste district is faced with some real issues, and maybe there's some creative ways and thinking outside the box that hasn't come forward. And so that's really the point of these forums, also just to inform people about it, because a lot of people felt like they didn't do a very good job in having the public involved in any of this process, and so that's another point of these meetings. So would encourage you to come. Amber, I can't remember her last name, from Wyoming Outdoors, she'll be moderating in Lander with a city council member, and here in Riverton, be myself and her moderating the forum. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I am grateful for the council's support this evening on the Denver Air Connections contract. I'll tell you, I've had the opportunity the last three weeks, month, of working with both Denver Air Connections and with Forecast, Inc., trying to work on the contract, get something that'll be beneficial for both of us, and I'm just impressed with their sincerity and their enthusiasm, and I think we're signing on with some good guys. And there's not a lot of guarantees in the contract, but we do have a, you know, we can get out of it anytime we want to with 90 days' notice, and so I think we can cap our liabilities with it. And then I'm equally excited, I talked to Nick Wangler from Forecast, and he honestly believes the plane's going to be full. He just thinks that if you want to get on that plane, you'll have to buy your tickets up 60 days ahead. So I'm hopeful that that'll actually come to pass, and we thought we'd make this announcement on April 1st. We didn't quite get it done, but if we had, we could have said, "Tickets go on sale April 1st, no fooling." But we didn't get that pulled together, but April 5th is still a good time to start, and the first plane will land in Riverton on July 1. We have an executive session this evening, and the chair would entertain a motion to convene into executive session for the purpose of litigation, considering litigation to which our governing body is or may be a part, in accordance with Wyoming Statute 16-4-405A3, and personnel, considering the appointment, employment, right to practice, dismissal, complaints, or charges against a public officer, professional person, or employee, in accordance with Wyoming Statute 16-4405A2, and for the purpose of considering offers, tendering wages, salaries, benefits, or terms of employment during negotiations, in accordance with Wyoming Statute 16-4-405A10.
Your Honor, I move that we go into executive session.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we go into executive session for the purposes described. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. So we stand convened into executive session at 9:30.